I am the Board of Mayor and Select Women of the City of McComb, City of Mississippi, August the 19th, 2025, 5:30 PM. Do want to welcome each and every one of you who have come out to be personal, be in attendance here at our board work session, as well as those who will be watching us by social media. Our work sessions are informal, no action item will be taken on tonight. We receive comments, we ask questions. Hopefully, through that process, we can make intelligent decisions that's best for the City of McComb. With that being said, we go to our agenda. First person, people, Sam and Ganeez Daniels.
Mayor, I'm Ganeez Daniels, this is my husband Sam Daniels, and we are the co-executive directors of the McComb City Railroad Depot Museum. We've been in that position for a little more than three years, and as all of you know, our depot was burned four years and three months ago. And we're still in the process of trying to reestablish the museum. Everything's going along pretty smoothly. We've had a lot of support locally, some people donating new artifacts, well, old artifacts, but new to the museum. We've even had people as far away as Illinois, Iowa, Alabama, Louisiana, Missouri, to mail artifacts to us just to support our museum. So that shows that we did have a lot of support and a lot of interest. We at the museum have a grand story to tell, not only about the railroad, but about the city of McComb and the county of Pike. There are so many wonderful things that we want to bring out other than just railroad history. So that's what we're seeking to do, and we wanted to talk to you a little bit about that tonight, because we have invested much time and money in the museum, in the depot.
Now it's my turn to say something, and I'm pleased to be here tonight. Ganeez and I have been working on a lot of different things, and one of the things that we found needs to be looked at a little bit more than we have done is the city and the depot lease, the museum's lease. It was signed the last time, 2014, with a 20-year term on it. However, when it describes what the museum is leasing, it doesn't quite match up with how the depot has been divided up now. As you probably already know, the Amtrak waiting room has moved from the center of the building to the north end. And I believe, if I'm not wrong, that there is a separate lease with Amtrak that defines their area, but this lease doesn't go along with it. It just says the museum, that's the whole building, and that's not accurate. So we need to tighten that up a little bit, make sure that we've got the right square footage in there. Another thing, as Ganeez mentioned, the things that we've been working on, you know what the old museum looked like? There's a lot of artifacts down in about 700 square feet. It stayed pretty much the same thing. We're going to be having a museum that is much more dynamic. If you've seen some of the more modern museums, and we'll just point to the World War II Museum down in New Orleans, you know there's lots of interactive things, electronics. Well, we're spending money to get those sort of upgrades in this particular museum. On top of that, we're getting new display cases, which are not cheap, but they're ordered just for that particular place. So what we would like to do is to make sure that we'll be able to continue to maintain these and keep them, is to extend our lease. It's only a 20-year lease, it runs out in 2034, but remember, for four years, we weren't able to be in that particular museum. And I'm proud to say we paid our rent every year on February the 14th, when it came due. So we've taken our financial support. So we would like, with all due respect, to extend our lease, make it a 50-year lease, so that we'll make sure that we'll be able to continue having this depot in good shape for a long time. Anything else, or any questions?
Well, I would like to add that we have been working on the 1883 office car, which is the dark green car that's down at our rolling stock by the depot. And we have just about finished with the renovating of that, and I would like to personally invite any of you to come see that. You have our contact information, just call and say, hey, there are two or three of us that would like to come look at it, and we'll show that to you. We're very proud of it, because we worked very hard on that. So the four years that the depot has not been there, we've continued to work. We've continued to clean things that were damaged, we have continued to gather new things, and we have continued to work on the office cars. So I want to send an invitation to each one of you, call me, email us, and we'll make it a point to meet you down there, and we'll give you a tour. It looks really good.
Any questions, board members, select women?
You said there's an existing agreement now?
Yes.
I'm just confused about the whole relationship between Amtrak, the city, and the museum. What is the, do we have a contract with Amtrak?
Yes.
What does it cover?
I can't say, because I don't have it in front of me, but we do have a lease with Amtrak.
Okay. Does it address the agreement with the museum and the city?
No.
Okay. Insurance? Do we cover Amtrak passengers with our insurance and all of that?
I can't say that, because I don't have the lease agreement in front of me. What we're doing is pull up the Amtrak lease agreement, and have our city attorney review it, and come back and bring us up.
Okay. Does their agreement include the railcars, the cars that are down there now? This lease does not address that.
It does only address the depot.
Okay, but they are spending money on the city's railcars. That needs to be addressed in some contractual language.
All right. It can be added into the lease.
Have we defined what the depot is insured for in the contents? Has that been done?
Well, the lease does have, does address insurance on our contents there. The city, I think, has the responsibility for some of the things, and then we have responsibility for other things. So that is addressed here. Also, the insurance must be in place, like, within 10 days of selling the things.
Well, I'm more concerned that the city has it insured properly in case there's another catastrophe, because that was part of the problem why it's taken four years to get it back built, right? So that's, it's more on this side of the fence than your side of the fence. But these questions that I'm asking are both sides of the fence. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, how does a private entity spend money on a public building? Is that, is that okay? Does that have to be defined in the lease agreement?
I mean, any improvements that they make is improvements that benefit the city, but that happens in any rental property. Any improvements made in rental property, those improvements benefit the owner. So any improvements they make is to benefit the city, but again, that is our depot there.
Okay, I just want, just to clarify, so that there won't be any issues down the road. If they are getting millions of dollars of grant money, I'm just giving you a lot of credit.
But we wish.
So you go and spend all this money down there, that's not going to be an issue with the city? They can just go spend it and modify the building however they want to?
As long as they are following the outline in the grant.
Okay, I'm setting it up for a future discussion. I mean, a private entity can go on a public building, if they're leasing, and do whatever improvements they want without approval of this board. Is that what you're saying?
That has been the way it's been, at least with them.
Okay, I'm good, as long as it's contractually correct. But they do need to get the railcar added into your agreement, because right now, I think you're spending money on something you don't authorize to spend money in.
It was a private donation.
But it's not, it's, it doesn't belong to you. You don't have a lease agreement with it. I guess, I just want to get that defined.
It's not our property.
Correct.
But in the past, the museum has been responsible for opening it up, taking tours through there, and we just needed to make sure that it was safe, and it wasn't safe before we repurposed.
I am, don't get me wrong, I am 100% behind you, but I just want to get it defined, where you were good to do whatever, all these things you want to do, so that no one will question it in the future about the lease, the insurance, all this.
So, and another thing, speaking to that, this particular lease was done 20 something, 10 something years ago, 11 years ago, and it's almost a completely different board now, different mayor and everything. So things are different than they were then, different understanding. And if we have that problem too, things happened before we came over, and we're having to learn about it.
I understand also, this is no different than any other other leases that we have. Boys and Girls Club, they did renovations down there. You know, so it's not anything that's different from any other lease that we've had, where the lease art has gone in and made improvements.
But you're not talking about making any changes to the structure, other than those that were already approved by Amtrak, the city, and the museum jointly?
At this point in time...
The only thing you're going to be putting in there are things that are movable and are not permanently attached to the building. Is that correct?
Well, some of the electronics will be permanently...
Security system?
Security system, cameras, television, video screens, those will be permanent, you know?
And even on August 4th, renovations are things like new carpet, window shades, things like that.
I just, I just would like for you to be defined in the lease agreement exactly all these things, as much as you can detail out, so you'll be clear on anybody, so no one can question it anytime in the future, in the next 50 years.
As, as we work on this lease, I'm sure that can be...
Yeah, great.
Okay. Any other questions? Done. Thank you, Mr. Sam and Ms. Ganeez, for everything you all do.
Our pleasure. We'll follow up with the city attorney, where the lease goes.
That's what you were just asking me to ask.
We'll follow up with you.
I would like to mention one thing. On September the 12th, McComb is going to have a walking history, starting here at the city hall, and going through various historical buildings, and I'd like to encourage all of you to participate, September the 12th.
Walking history?
Yes.
We'll have the train cars open, and you'll be able to go through them, but I don't think we'll be in the depot museum at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number two, safety concerns at Delaware and Burke Street, Mr. Michael Crittenden.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Select women, select women. Bringing a safety concern to you, this plague, my family and other families, the Crittenden family, the Cravetto family, numerous others over the years. My concern is that two utility poles, one at Delaware and Burke Street, and a guy wire. Second utility pole is just east of that one, in the beginning of the curve. What I would like to see are those two utility poles removed, have the utilities run underground, or move the poles to the opposite side, south side of Delaware, where accidents are less likely to happen on the inside of the curve rather than outside. If, if there's any, if anyone needs to meet me there at any time, to discuss anything, call me anytime. My son, Trey, on August 8th, 2021, was killed after striking a telephone pole at Delaware. At Delaware and Burke Streets. After striking the utility pole, he struck the guy wire, guy wire. He pled to death in the roadway. This has been horrific to my family, among others. This, this was preventable, I'm not saying by y'all. This has been going on since the 80s. Just because it's been this way 50 years doesn't make it right. This needs to be corrected. What I'm asking is for you to take a stand and let's correct this. Let's think of the public safety of McComb. We have citizens, we have visitors on a daily basis passing this location with not a single thought of the danger that that poses. If you have any doubts on how horrific this can be by hitting a pole or motorcycle, I have. Somebody wants video of my son, right here. Anyone's free to watch it if you want to. It'll change your mind. This is video that I see in my mad day, cannot unsee it. Anyone here see it? Since watching this video four years ago, I've suffered from depression and PTSD. I can't, I mean, I can't unsee it. What I pray for is for no other family to go through this. I'm sure Ms. Cravetto, Ms. Cravetto prays the same thing. I have Ms. Kathy Phillips, she was right behind my son, and it happens, she prayed with him before he died in the roadway. This is my wife, his mother, Jennifer. This is, this pain has got to stop. No more future pain for these families. This, enough is enough. I have... Here's my son Trey when he was little. Here's just days before that. Here's two children he left. Same two children that is hit stone. There's the pole, September 8th, 2021. Took a month before I could go there. There's the pole, Saturday. Same pole, same guy wires. Power company never removed the guy wire, they just put another one in its place. That's the second pole that starts in the beginning of the curve, need to be removed. It's been struck several times, this is scarred up. Why not move these poles? Let's get them out of the curve. First pole, pole on the east end, closest here, closest to city hall here, 15 inches from the roadway, 15 inches. Pole took my son's life, her son's life, 24 inches from the roadway. This is from the Federal Highway Administration. Recommended practices, 64.1 lateral offset. Utility poles and trees of mature diameters greater than four inches are recommended be located at least six feet behind the curve of urban roadways. Lateral offsets always need to be greater than four feet behind the curve. 15 inches and 24 inches, foot those measures. Been that way 50-plus years. Took many lives, injured many people. This is from a highway engineer, Steve Paul Scott. Motor vehicle collisions with utility poles are another important consideration. These crashes result in approximately 1,200 deaths each year, more than 65,000 injuries. More than half of these fatalities and injuries occur in urban areas. The degree of involvement is related to the number of poles in use, their close proximity to the travelway, and their unyielding nature. Concentration of accidents at a site or a certain type of accident that seem to occur over and over in a given jurisdiction, this may indicate highway utility system is contributing to the accident potential. Utility pole accidents are subject to the same type of accident pattern as other types of roadway accidents. They are thus subject to traditional highway accident study procedures. A detailed study of accident records may identify high accident locations and point to improvements that will reduce the number and severity of future accidents. The following countermeasure made up is for... Place utility lines underground. Place new utility pole where they are less likely to be struck. Relocate existing utility pole farther away from the roadway. Reduce the number of utility poles. So I'm, I'm asking for this, Mr. Mayor, and Select Woman, and Select Woman to step up. Take a stand, let's fix this. Any questions? Anytime you ever need me, anybody that needs my number, you can have it. For, thank you. Say God bless you, Mayor, Select Woman, Select Woman. God bless the city of McComb, and I'm looking for some change in this.
Board members?
Yes, anyone reach that to me to ask for that question?
I have.
Wait, last, a year or two ago, I'm just asking a question, because I have an underground line for my house.
This week?
This week.
What was your question?
I asked if anybody reached that to me.
Select McCarthy asked us. A gentleman told me that Select McCarthy also had reached out, Mr. Fisher Warren.
He's downtown, or he's in Jackson?
Exactly, he's the regional person for the incident.
I would love to see it run underground, I know a more cost-effective way would be cross Delaware, put those, at least those two poles on the south side, but then you have to remove the guy wires. But they, they can do it, they do it every day, I know how to do it. They need to be removed, this is... My biggest fear is it happening again. I mean, her son was killed two years after our incident. It's gonna happen again. It doesn't need to happen now. I mean, this is for them.
Select McCarthy?
So, you know, if we recall, the beginning of the article money discussion, you know, this, this, and narrowing Delaware in this curve, when we say we needed a traffic study for 10K to see the feasibility, and then got voted down as split vote. I think, like, the board, in that, in that discussion, you know, I spoke about the three people who have died in that curve in the past 10 years. Like, I can't tell a story like that, you know, it hasn't happened in me. I think we've discussed the ADA issues, of people trying to get up and down that sidewalk with a telephone pole on the sidewalk. You know, I'm a big fan of complete streets, spending the money necessary, even at the expense of other things, to make the street perfect, so that you don't, you know, kind of have to pick and choose what, what you do. But, you know, I hope it's something that this board can consider in the, in the near future.
Select Woman?
Can we also ask for a representative from the energy department and talk to the board about something like this, if that can matter?
I want to pass Mr. Fisher. To both families, we understand, our hearts go out to both families who have lost, and if there's more to those also. We will discuss this with each team, and hopefully come up with a solution.
Anytime you need, if you want me to meet anyone, just tell.
Okay. Anything else on the board there? Thank you.
Will. Thank you.
Okay. Number three, invoices, Gary.
So the first invoice we got here is for the McComb Youth Tax Water improvements and that part of the project. Just, gave an update on that last time, they're still in the Bear Town area working, they're close finishing C.C. Bryant, close finishing up North Flutus Street, and up there today. The city's working on a, while one of the bridges. And again, Dickerson Bow is not back in paving, but that's something that I expect you to get to here in the next couple weeks.
So this will go to Dickerson Bowing. This payment? Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions? Just want to make sure we...
Youth Tax Water Improvement? Second one here is paving number five for the Delaware Avenue Project. As you've seen, they're underway on that. They've got one lane left, main line, and they've got to beat their sidewalks. They're going to be milled out on Brooklyn to pave. Soon as everything works out, they should be complete and paving by the end of next week.
Go again?
I don't know if this is outside, just go to the contractor, but on the city streets, they did an excellent job to sweep the curb and gutter, undoing years of kind of abuse there. On Delaware, I still see some opportunities in the curb and gutter. In fact, they did tighten that up.
Yeah, kind of the northbound is kind of pretty material.
Yes, that's right.
And they're, they're going to clean all that out, so noted, and we'll do.
Okay, and this one again goes to Green Bryant. Am I correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure when we're putting it on the agenda that it reflects that goes to Green Bryant. Okay?
All right, the next one is a memorandum of agreement for the Pearl River Avenue Intersection Project. This is the agreement with the city and MDOT on that project and those, that million dollars that the flood was abrupt. Just to give an update on that, it's, project is in design review, I expect... Just to give an update on that, um, it's, uh, project is in design review, I expect, um, let's see, we're in the middle of August here, uh, end of September. I expect us to get, um, be able to advertise for bids, so that will be the next thing that we come to y'all is getting a letter from MDOT telling us that we're able to go out and bid the, bid the project. So that's, that's the next step.
Okay, and we need to opt out from the air design.
That's correct.
Any question? Okay, you want to put all those on the agenda for, for the, okay. Number four, we're gonna skip number four. Mr. Green, your turn.
He's number four, either, right here. He's not here.
So how are you?
I'm good, I'm good, uh. Number five, uh, authorized mayor sign, uh, demolition contract I did, uh, getting to this pass, so everyone will take a look at it. Um, it's a contract that I've been using before, uh, so, um, it's, uh, not necessarily anything new. It was drafted for, uh, uh, the demo project when I, when this administration first came on, I think, uh, it went after me. And, uh, those kids were astronomical, but this contract, man, went along with it. So, uh, it was just, uh, effort to get the authorized mayor to sign the contract so he can get started. He said, uh, in about a week and a half, he'd get started. Uh, he was wrapping up the project, uh, getting it booked ahead and, uh, once he's done, he'll get started on it.
Okay, uh, Select McCarthy.
Uh, so this is a same contract we've used in the past, uh, it's, uh, in the section two hundred, two oh six. This is effectively disconnecting place in a safe manner of public utilities. What, um, how, how do we know? How do we know, I haven't seen the contract, I haven't seen the bid package. How do we know that it's gonna happen this time if we have concerns about it happening in the past?
Well, we make sure that we plug the sewer, the electrical is cut loose by energy and the gas is cut loose by, uh, central power. They changed names, but they do that themselves, we put those tickets in.
Yes, the sewer that we're concerned about.
Right, uh, yes, I will make sure that's plugged, it's just kept and go in the bottom of it, but, uh, we'll make sure we, uh, go out and visually check those and, uh, document it.
Select woman.
Mayor, I thought someone had questioned about a property on Wall Street, uh, I think it was six seventeen. So is that clear? What you're saying about the issue someone had about Wall Street?
Uh, it was, uh, a lady who called and said that she wanted to tear the property down herself. I told her about the building that we had on last, last week.
Last week.
Uh, she didn't show up, uh, not sure why, um, but I told her, you know, the, the accident, you know, it's, the miss, maybe not the right thing to say, but, uh, I told her the cost of demo that property was pretty low, I think it was fifteen hundred bucks. I probably, you know, let the city go ahead and do it, because I would hurt just to give it, I'd give them off of that, because we had it in court. That was also one, uh, the, uh, I mentioned, uh, select, the candidate that probably had been to court, due to environmental court. That was one that had, but it was a different person who showed up to court versus the person that I talked with on the phone. And the property itself, uh, had some air or something. So I talked to four individuals on that particular.
Select woman.
Okay, Mayor, okay, like, from my understanding, the person name, I thought that that property had been sold to another individual.
Uh, no, this property is in the statements. I'm forgetting the name of the statement, it definitely says, I talked to four individuals, three months and a niece, who I talked to, I had all documented in our, uh, in our software that we use for our places. And it's burners too. The person that lives next to the property is trying to buy it, doing this time, but last time we had it in court, I, I only got a three-way with the two, and tried to make the deal work, but they, for whatever reason, they don't want, they don't want to see it. So it's been in condition for a while.
Do you want to pull from the list?
No, I don't want to pull from this, I'm, I'm just saying the person called me with a complaint and then she said that the property had been sold to another individual. So I'm just trying to ask Mr. Henry what.
I know a couple of people that want to buy the property as is, but it's that air problem that taking.
Fifteen hundred on top of whatever cost.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, I, she didn't mention to me that the property had been sold, but I talked with her, uh, maybe, maybe Tuesday or Wednesday or last week. I took it that bad, I thought it was before the public hearing because she said in Wall Street, it was on the front of the paper. Yep, that's what it was, she saw it, or somebody told her, she called me, and, uh, we talked about it.
I'm gonna get my word out. Put it on the agenda. Wait, wait, go ahead.
On the, uh, paragraph number one, where it talks about McComb agrees to pay and the contract they use except for some, per parcels is what's performed as full compensation for work, for the performance of all work relating to the demolition and structural, there, the, the term of payment is, is, is missing here. That reportedly, you know, state law should be net forty-five, but nothing, there's no language in here that says that. And is this billed per or is this billed, is it billed, okay, so if they did parcel number two, right here, four twenty North Lane, that's three thousand dollars. Are they gonna bill three thousand dollars?
No, this, uh.
Or they're gonna wait until the end when they clear all of them?
Yeah, it's when they clear all of them, it's all weird, you know, I have to find, uh, what, section eighteen, but it says, but.
They're saying about parcels, so then how much I mean which part?
I, I understand that, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
On the third one on that, it says, successful bidder shall submit a detailed invoice at the end of project.
It also says it on the third page in the please note, number eight down at the bottom, it seems to be.
Where?
Uh, what would be the third page? Where it says, please note, number eight down at the bottom.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, there you go, that's actually, also, paid as well, see, Paul, yeah, right.
Okay, anything else, attorney? Okay, put it on the agenda. Boards and officials, Mr. Green.
Uh, so, it's, uh, I assume everyone has a copy of the.
They do. If, see it in front.
Advocates, uh, so we do have just enough advocates to cover every, uh, vacant position. Three being, uh, on the historic, uh, preservation commission, uh, Ms. Gannit, who spoke, uh, on the first item on the agenda. She's one of the advocates, uh, we have a gentleman that is, uh, recently moved here from Louisiana, uh, and we have, uh, Mr. Keith Sibley, uh, he. Okay, Jane, you're the one.
Yes, go.
The, uh, claim. Historic.
Historic.
Historic, okay. Yeah, so, uh, so Keith from Wolf Beach.
Keith's going, so, planning.
Okay, yeah. So, uh, that's three for historic, uh, two for claim.
Select McCarthy.
Uh, this last one, premium rat Ramswell, um, if you look over his application, um, it's pretty impressive, he held a vacant position in Florida. He was a chair at the Florida League of Cities, which is similar, which is exactly the same amount. He's chosen to live here. I've always, when I was on the planning commission, um, I started both architectural review and historic, um, it was very helpful so that you could, you know, relay the message between the two boards, a, a little bit. Um, so there's be more than just Henry relaying that message. Um, he did sign up for both, um, I do plan on making a, a motion to allow him on both, uh, next week. When someone of his stature chooses to call, I hope that we can choose, choose the.
Hey, if I add, uh, you don't want to exceed.
Oh, I wouldn't exceed, I would remove one of these in the package.
Okay, put it on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Green. Okay, Select woman, Bailey, it's your turn.
Um, okay, so I, I haven't added no, no lottery signs to Main Street, but I see that we have some on Main Street already. So what do we have to do to enforce the, the signs?
We have to have a citizen or a business owner to actually make a complaint about a lottery. Select.
So. I, I don't know the right there saying this, it said in a different, different session last time, but if a officer, and I'm not an officer, so I honestly don't know. If I'm an officer and I witness a violation of McComb's coding, coding ordinances, why do I have to get someone else to, to do that? Why can't I go down, why can't I go down and say, hey, you're, you're loitering? You know, move, use your citation. You know, if I see someone speeding, I didn't need to get anyone else to agree that they were speeding. You know, if I see someone, if someone gets murdered, there was no, sometimes there's no witnesses and we go figure it out. You know, why for these, and I'm asking as a person who doesn't know, why for these does it have to be the press charges route? If we need to hold that question formally for next week, I'm okay with that, because I don't want to do.
In respect to lottery, uh, that, that's a misdemeanor, misdemeanor, uh, complaint against, uh, that the business or another citizen need to make that complaint. Reason being, um, is what constitutes a lottery? Uh, standing on the public, on the public sidewalk, or annoying, or irritating, or interrupting the business, that have to be, uh, well established before. Now, a police officer can ask somebody to leave because of lottery and if they don't, they can enforce that.
So, if I, if I hear you clearly, if a police officer is present and walk up to Lockley and tell Lockley to move on, and they come back through and I'm in the same place, then that police officer can actually, right, okay.
So with that being said, and per our conversation last week, can we get Main Street cleared out? The police has seen them downtown, just standing around, not patronizing any businesses, just standing, doing what they do after ten thirty and a half minutes later. And the police is are out there and they're still just standing there. So what's the difference in that, the statement you just made?
It's not against the law to stand there, that's what I'm saying, it's not against the law for people to stand there.
They don't have a purpose? They just standing there?
This is why it's so important for somebody to make their complaint, because what other person?
But you said that the police officers see them and they're not doing anything, they can ask them to leave.
I have to ask them to leave and if they don't leave at the time.
That's what I'm telling you to do, so when they see that many people standing around, that we, they're doing something, because we get the v, the videos, so they're doing something. So can the police just ask them to leave?
Yes.
And if they don't leave, misdemeanor, as we discussed before, doesn't matter, do what you have to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's getting out of hand and it's, it's a lot, it's a bit much, and there's signs down there and there's a lot of businesses down there that has invested a lot of money. And we're just looking over it and just letting people just stay, and it's not like.
For non-patriots, sort of.
I mean, it's not right, it's not fair, and I, I understand the police are there and they were there when all the, at, these incidents took place the other night. Did anybody get arrested?
Oh, I think there was several yesterday, yes, ma'am.
But since the police has seen them there, I'm asking you to ask them, if they're not patronizing any of those businesses down there, they, and they're, I mean, common sense now says things, I'm pulling. That lady just standing around, that many people, being against walls and doing all kinds of stuff, we really, ask them to leave.
We can do that, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, Select McCarthy, Mullins, and then I'll send your turn. Okay, because I don't know, is there any time element related to the lottery, as ma'am?
No.
Not with them. Two minutes, half an hour. What?
Public, so public sidewalk, judge, yeah, judge's opinion.
But at the same time, if the police are out there, seeing them just standing around, not doing whatever you're saying it.
We could, we could, there are ways to do that, but I mean, if this, for Friday, this applies too.
It's for Friday, there's activities going on, they're there with their purposes. See, purpose, no purpose.
So I'm, as a police officer, determine that purpose.
I would think, yes, and all the police officers, oh, details, you know.
Like gambling or drinking, I can, I can definitely enforce that with no problem.
Okay, so you, you, that's the one they do.
But walking and standing is, is.
But that's not what I'm, I'm trying to say, we talked about it last week, what goes on, what's, what people.
I understand you.
Yeah, so, and they're still there, and it's, and you can see the evidence the next day, what's going on out there in the park, and, I'm, I'm so sidewalking everywhere. So, we kind of know what's going on, and they, they're booking, and I don't know how else to put it without putting it how I want to put it.
That's, I mean.
City attorney.
So, let me, let me, uh, I just want to read to you what the city's ordinance says regarding lording, lording in a public place. That's authority of a police officer. Unlawful acts, it shall be unlawful for any person to launder, launder, wander, stand or remain idle, either alone or in concert, consort with others in a public place in such a manner as to create a cause to be created, a danger of breach of the peace, create or cause to be created any disturbance or annoyance to the comfort and repulse of any person, solicit or engage in lewd, lascivious, or illegal acts, including prostitution, obstruct the free passage of pedestrians or vehicles, or obstruct, molest, or interfere with any person lawfully in a public place. Police officer's authority, when any police officer shall, in the exercise of reasonable judgment, decide that the presence of a, of any person in a public place is causing or is likely to cause any of the conditions above, then he may, if he deemed it necessary for the preservation of public peace and safety, order that person to leave that place, as chief has said. Any person who shall refuse to leave after being ordered to do so, shall be guilty of violation of this section. I, I, I want to, uh, and I read that for the purpose of making sure we are clear. If I'm downtown McComb and I'm just standing there and I'm not creating or causing to create danger, if I am not creating or causing to create disturbance, if I'm just standing there and I'm not soliciting or engaging in lewd, lascivious, or illegal acts, if I'm just standing there and I'm not obstructing passage of pedestrians or vehicles, if I'm just standing there and I'm not obstructing, molesting, or interfering, he cannot ask me to move. That is my free right to stand there, thank you. So you have to make a distinction on what that person is doing. He, he just standing there without violating any of that, you should leave them alone. Now, if they doing any of that and you ask them to leave, and then they don't leave, then you have the basis for illegal actions. This is your ordinance. I'm just reading you the ordinance of the city.
I get, I get that part and understand, but we all know what, what was, what's happened the last couple of years.
I understand, I do, I do, but I can't seriously say that. I understand, I do, I do, but I can't seriously say that I can go put everybody in jail, but I, I can't say we have to tell a definitive plan and a, and a action to do it, 'cause as much as you are frustrated, I am frustrated. 'Cause I get the texts and the pictures also, so I am tired of it. So we have to plan it to, together, short of violating anybody's rights. I wanna make that perfectly clear, but a lot of stuff that's going on Main Street would not be tolerated anymore. To include for Friday, any other kind of event, it will not be tolerated. So, uh, extra range, you deal with the mood, it's all up to second.
Okay, I'm gonna say, that's all I can say. Uh, my next one is I was asking for a copy of the open, 'cause I just needed a copy of, did anybody get me one?
Open container law, we don't have a open container law.
Well, downtown.
They, they're downtown.
And I, I want, I want a copy, you read, you have a copy that I can read.
I, I can get you a copy.
I guess, well, okay.
It might be pretty silly, maybe, but it's a print.
And I got it in my office on my desk.
Okay, so then, I'm gonna know when the thirty days start.
The, the thirty days is up on twenty sixth of this month.
The twenty sixth, so it could be.
But we still have to get that information up to the Department of Revenue. Uh, but, but, but at the same time, there are guidelines in that ordinance, and to be in fact, Mr. Dave and I met, Mr. Dave, when did you and I meet? Was it Monday?
Monday.
Monday, to talk about that ordinance and how we as citizens, listen to other people who have no clue of the ordinance, and share information that is misleading, and misconception of what that ordinance says, okay? Because it's not open container as we talk about it, because you have, each business have to have a permit. You just don't walk around with a cup, or with a bottle, it has to have a cup with that business who has a permit. And nobody have a permit right now, so nobody should be walking around drinking anything, and if they are, they need to be arrested. But because we haven't read the ordinance, and because we wanna spread information that's not valid, and we wanna make things look negative for downtown McCombe, we spread it. And that's what has happened. Not one business have a permit because the ordinance has not gone into effect. So if there's no business with a permit, nobody should be allowed to be walking the streets of downtown McCombe, drinking anything, and if they are, they need to be arrested. Read the ordinance before you get out there on Facebook and say stuff you don't know what you're talking about. But because you won't read, you put out false scenarios about what downtown is and what's happening downtown, and, and open container. Read it before you go off sharing misinformation. And that's, and I'm gonna make sure you get a copy for your note, and you can be saying what's right.
Thank you.
Okay, select woman.
Yes, mayor, okay, now in the paper, Enterprise Journal, it said thirty days, right? Okay, and you say, it said the twenty sixth, you say no one have a permit, but in the paper, it said thirty days. I heard what the citizen's saying, I'm like a second try to sugarcoat it no better than what was in the paper. It was in the paper, right, sir? I'm asking you.
Thirty days from the day it was passed.
Okay, and it was in the paper, so.
No, thirty days from the day of publication.
It was publication.
Okay, but it was in the paper, right? Okay, so the citizen heard that point, maybe they didn't hear the point about a permit, so you saying no business downtown have a permit?
That's right, if you go back in there, they have to be permitted.
So they come back to the police, go with you, permit?
They go to Mr. Green, get a permit, and they have to put that permit on their business entrance, and they have to put the map of the entertainment district on their entrance, see, nobody says, none of that has been done. So nobody have the right to be walking downtown or walking on Broadway, drinking anything.
So we let the citizen in the business note ask them today what they must do, that's what you saying, right?
I'm saying, if Lockley had a business on Main Street, Lockley needs to get with Mr. Green, get a permit, Mr. Green would explain to them what they need to do. The, the type of cup, how much is the cover of that cup, how big the cup should be, and all that. Mr. Green is responsible for that, okay? Once, once that has been achieved, that business, one, select woman, as it comes to Lockley's business, select woman, as it can leave Lockley's business with one cup, with my name, address, covering twenty-five percent of that cup, no bigger than sixteen. Okay, it can be smaller, but no larger than sixteen, okay? That's correct, read, read the ordinance. And that has, that will not, that, 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 that does not, and have not happened. And that had, that cup got to be approved by Mr. Green to make sure it meets the, the ordinance. Select woman McKenzie.
So, let's, let's talk reality, um, you know, when did all of these issues start? You know, what, what, what triggered these discussions that we're having around this table right now about adding police presence and these things, you know, what precipitated the public? Uh, we, we, uh, this board has changed the dynamic of the community by the actions that we have taken here. And in my opinion, you've presented this reality that you have open, all-night-long party atmosphere, Main Street. And that's because of actions of this board. It didn't happen four months ago, there were none of these issues downtown. Now we have all, now we're putting a burden on the police officer to decide whether when this, when this thirty days up, and somebody's out there with an open container, and he stands out there with his container for four hours, I wanna see somebody tell him he's violating the law, you know, he's got, he, it's open container, I'm outta here, I got in the leisure district.
There you go with open container, it's not the way you're saying it.
Okay.
It's not the way.
I just put a top on the container, I'm standing here with a top on a container.
No, first of all, you got to go to that business.
Okay, I went to the business, I got a top on my container from the daiquiri shop. Legit, that, that, you know, and I'm standing there. So you tell me how the officer is going to remove anyone from lottery, I am, I am right there in the leisure district of law now, okay? So it's just, you're putting a burden on that, but my point of what I, when I, my initial question is, when did all this start? It started because this board has two laws.
No, it started before then, it started before then, if you didn't know it, it started before then.
Okay, you should be real proud of that, Mr. Mayor, that you've been overseeing all this, let's do something about it. And we're making it worse, so, anyway.
How are we gonna make it worse when you can go to a liquor store, buy your liquor, go out to your car, pour it up in a container, and you have violated the law right then?
Okay.
I mean, what's the difference? Sometime we wanna put, put more on something without e- even looking at it. You know, you wanna make it all negative, when it could be positive, if you put the right behavior and put everything in place, this could be good for the city of McCombe. But there are people who wanna make it as something that's gonna make McCombe bad.
Okay, I, I don't think bringing bad things to light necessarily are a negative thing. It's bringing a problem, I didn't make the people get downtown and fight and, because someone posted it on Facebook. You know, this is, I, I, in my opinion, I think from a leadership position here, you've got to realize what your actions are. You are creating a, and these people aren't gonna go read thirty pages of an ordinance and say, alright, look, this is Friday night, I can go do this, this, and this downtown, they're not gonna read that. They're hearing, I can go downtown with alcohol and stay out there all night, in, in, uh, resort status, and that's what you're seeing. It's, the reality is, that is what is happening, it's not because I'm saying it, or somebody, I said something on Facebook and the paper wrote about it. Uh, I said it after the fact, after it's been happening, it's not me causing it, it's 'cause I said something negative. These people downtown are doing it, and it's because, in my opinion, we are leading them that direction.
You are leading them that direction, that's why I'm trying to clear it up, make it plain, and have the police officers to enforce.
Let me lead it in that direction, let's put UFC fight down center of Main Street and let at it. You know, then we could really have a big entertainment district, that would, that's, that's what would be really good, right? So, I, I'm done having this city conversation. Move on, reality will define it.
Well, you know, I wish people who drink wouldn't drive, but they do.
You wanna discuss that openly? Come on, go ahead and say it out loud, quit being a wimp about it.
I wish people who drink would not drive, and they wouldn't get DUI.
Okay.
Okay.
Did I get convicted of a DUI, Mayor?
But you were charged.
Did I get a conviction?
That's a good question. Okay, very, very, very good question, very good question.
I'll say something, the police would stop me, uh, a couple of months ago, but I had nothing to drink. But I'm just being honest, you understand, I do not drink and drive, I just said, I'm just trying to help calm it down. But the police would did stop me, I was very upset, you understand what I'm saying? But I don't drink and drive, most of the time I don't even drink at all, if I drink, I might have to drink maybe once a year, or twice a year, that's it, it might be a little daiquiri, but still, they did stop me, and I was very upset. I'm just being honest, it happened to me, but they found out I had nothing to drink, and I don't drink and drive, everybody can vouch for that. I'm just trying to calm the situation down.
Nah, I'll give a full report when y'all are ready.
I'm just, I'm just trying to stop it.
This guy wants to put it on me, he, he keep alluding to it, but anytime anybody wants a full report, let me know.
But they stopped me, I'm just.
I'm so glad you identified yourself, because all I said was a person who drink.
Mayor, everybody knows what you're trying to do, quit being, quit acting like.
Well, you were the one who identified yourself, I didn't identify no one, okay?
It's on WLBT, and I'm.
I didn't identify, but I did not identify anybody, I think I was clear, a person, a person who drinks should not drive, that's all I said. Now, you were the one who went down that halfway to say, hey, it's me, it's me, you identified yourself.
Look, I'm okay talking about it.
Yeah, can we move on?
But let me tell you.
No, I don't wanna move on.
Come on, man.
Excuse me, can I move to you?
I mean, if, go ahead and talk about it, because I didn't identify yourself, you identified, I just made a statement.
Okay, it was, okay.
A blind statement.
It was McCombe police, it was not, uh, uh, the sheriff department, it was an undercover agency, you know, like the narcotic people stopped me, I'm just being honest, they pulled me over on Ellen Bush, I'm just trying to calm the situation down. And then I asked him, and he wanted me to take a test, he told me no, but it happened to me, but that's.
It can happen, it can happen, it can be false too.
Let's move on, man, let's do something else.
I'm not drinking and driving. I'm trying to calm it down.
I got places to be, come on.
Chair's gotta be chairy. Chair makes a difference.
We'll get you that law, number nine?
Um, this was left off the, uh, this was left off the agenda, uh, last week, and I think it was on accident, so I just wanted to make sure it brought up, so it would be on the agenda next week. Uh, we've already discussed it three times.
Put it on the agenda. Water Company for America, you should have a report, I met with them, uh, Mr. Teddy, the deputy director for Public Works met with them, Mr. Nicker met with them. What you have right now is a draft of their final report to us. Um, they're hoping to have the final draft to us, so it looks like roughly right now, uh, the total cost for them to be here, um, they generated twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars in new revenue for the city of McCombe. You know that we have to give them half of that, so if the final report, if it shows remains, so they will get thirteen thousand and some dollars from that. Um, they're hoping to have the final report, because there was one meter, I think one meter that needed to be, uh, put in or something, I don't remember what exactly what he said, but they should have the final report to us. So they, overall, uh, Mr. Dupree said that the city of McCombe people in utility building doing an excellent job. Um, uh, we ought to be proud of them, because most cities, it's fifty thousand and above, uh, when it comes to revenue being generated, new revenue being generated. Uh, he say he'd be more than glad to come speak to us as it relates to their files. But he want just give us a rough draft of what they will be, we will be looking at, select man.
So Dr. Dupree, you know, I'm not trying to go back down the negative path. Uh, but looking at page three, the outstanding issues, there are some really concerning things, I'm trying not to say names, but, uh, work order five, um, the city's, what, what, what says on the billing does not match what WCA read on the meter themselves. Number eight, it says it's been, it's been, um, it's been replaced, but there's still communication issue. Uh, number nine is, the billing system has one number, Water Company of America has a different number. Like, just like respectfully, you know, if you look at these work orders, you know, they date back twelve months or more. And then especially if you flip all the way over to work order eight, you know, where we're billing this customer two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, but they should have been paying forty-three hundred dollars a month, you know, where we're shorting ourselves four thousand dollars a month, that's almost salary, folks. You know, you, you need someone else to work on Ucut repairs, there's your Ucut repair guy right there. But we're just, like, what is it gonna take to get us over the hump? 'Cause we, I feel like Water Company of America and this board, speaking in my opinion, is kinda banging our head on a brick wall, we're not moving anywhere, so the good news is, I agree, like, we've, of the, of the seventy-two fines, we corrected thirty-six of them, but thirty-six are still not correct, a year later. I mean, we start with the big dollar now, I'm sorry, I kinda jumped all over, but this work order eight that I was referring to, that's a four thousand dollar monthly shortage that the city was receiving, you know, how, how do we, like, like, when is this going to fix? Do we need to put a date on the wall that we can hold, hold the team accountable to? I mean, if I was losing four thousand dollars a month, I would not have a job. I mean, is that, is that fair? Okay, I, I think many of us are business people, okay, so why do we allow our public works department and our billing department and Water Company of America to not, 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 you know, get in a huddle and hash this out? Not say anyone needs to lose their job?
I think they have already hashed all these out. Uh, those were the findings, and based upon the meeting and conversation, those have been worked out.
I mean, Mayor, respectfully.
What did I said, when they met with us, with Mr. Teddy, Mr. Nicker, these things. When they met with us, with Mr. Teddy, Mr. Nicker, these things, some of them have been worked out. Now, he will come here and speak to you and you can ask him this, okay?
So, I just, I want to add something to the agenda that concerns Water Company of America because, you know, I'm of the opinion, you, you work a job for years. And basically you're an expert at the job or you should be an expert at the job. These are things that our people should be fixing without us having to pay a commission to someone else to discover. And I love the opinion that this contract should be canceled. I think it should be placed on the agenda to cancel the contract and we need to figure out what we will do about making sure that our people are trained properly, fully booked.
So, you know, I, I, I agree. You know, I wish we could cancel this contract, but it goes back to the point. They found stuff and it's still not fixed. We have a operational gap somewhere that is failing and they're plugging the hole as best they can right now.
Yeah, bloody.
Oh, no, we, we don't have that perfect, you know, I, I would love to dig into it. I bet I could figure it out, but we're going to get yelled at for day-to-day operations.
We all know the day-to-day operations have been failing in the system in here. We have a responsibility to not, we're told to get involved in day-to-day operations. But when day-to-day operations fail to the point in which they have been failing, we have a responsibility to get involved. Now, that is just my opinion.
Can we put personnel on executive session next week? I have a proposal for you.
Um, again, I'll say let Mr. Dupree come here and talk to you all in reference to the report.
Mayor, I think public workers doing a great job, but I think we do not have enough employments for all those positions. I'm still saying we have a lot of openings. We do, and, and, and we sit here, okay?
I'm gonna let you finish.
Okay, I need you to go here and say.
Uh, I, I agree with you. My motion, my, what I want to discuss it next week is adding one additional person into public works.
We need more than one. We need more than one.
I agree.
You know, we have openings. I'm just being honest. Public workers doing a great job and it's saying just breaking down water lines and everything, but they, they are doing a great job. They fixing things fast as they can and sometimes they might have too much overdue to do, but still they doing the best they can. And I'm, I'm going to speak up for public worker.
Okay. I will get Mr. Dupree here and he can go over the report. He just want to give you all a draft of what they're looking at. Okay, do want to let you know, Macomb School Board has submitted their budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, I have it here in my hand. The budget is eight million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, they're looking for, uh, mileage rate to remain the same at fifty-eight point five.
Yes, sir. Did you say eight million?
That's what they say.
You missed the maintenance. You missed a number in front of that, like twenty-eight or thirty-eight.
I'm reading directly from your page.
Can we get a copy of this?
You can get a copy.
Uh, this is just, this is just coming from the, uh, this is just coming from that three mil note. This is just what makes this one. Okay. But their total budget is fifty, fifty-four, oh no, forty-four, eight, forty-four, I mean, forty-four, eight with a projected revenue of forty-four, nine. Forty-four million, nine hundred, forty-four, eight.
My mistake?
No, no, you're good. This is what applies to us, it's just this part. But can we get a copy of this?
You can.
First email.
And their mileage rate is the same.
Okay. There, there's some, uh, there's some citizens pretty disappointed in the, uh, pause construction summit. We could just ask them if they can even start that construction back or not. That's what that happened when, uh, that's when I caught up in that, uh, federal decision.
Okay, also you see invoices in your package from, um, Secure Network. For seven thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. Also you see in your package a bill from, hmm, I don't know what next door is, but. Microsoft Business Basic Plus Setup Fee. And annual and setup fee.
Um, let me get a second there.
Go ahead. Um, and this came in to miss our city clerk.
So Secure Network, it's my understanding, is the company that has, has kind of failed, in my opinion. The attorney's probably on my, in a second. Uh, kind of failed us recently. I think the server looked down yesterday. Um, uh, if anyone happened to find anyone at M and L, uh, if not, I would like to direct, uh, for us to formally vote to direct the, I guess, acting city administrator, I guess. To, to, uh, get, get second quotes on this kind of stuff from competitors. Uh, I'm, I'm very disappointed in the level of service we got. Like, I still can't get email on, uh, on my stuff. And the director is often very helpful. Uh, I think that if this would be a good time for us to move on from this company. Remember, this is not the AS four hundred company. This is just our server, uh, kind of just like our, our computer guy.
I have two persons.
Yeah. But it's not the AS four hundred guy.
Okay, so we need to get another quote delegated.
She'll do it. Hard to avoid you on another quote.
Yes.
Where would need to hire IT person?
I don't disagree, but.
Who need to hire an IT person?
Can we look at sharing accounting?
No, we don't need sharing accounting. It's a great person, probably takes the already, that we can look at hiring.
Um, we can look at.
I think that's a good call. I wonder how much we stand on Secure Network's yearly, if it's cheaper than a salary position. I think that's really a call.
Last IT, we did, last IT person that the city had was Gloria Lo. Uh, and when she left, the city ended up, uh, privatizing.
Mayor, it's a lot of great IT person, uh, that worked for Macomb School District, that worked for, uh, other school district. Maybe we also need to just look at hiring a IT person. I'm just being honest, you know?
I agree. I think the school district is trying to shove it to the, uh, our IT department, so I think that, that'd be good.
But I'm just saying.
And I'm just saying.
We, we can look at it. We can have our A job person to, uh, generate a job description, go out there, start looking.
Yep. Put on a second.
Yes. Even though you're looking to replace our IT person, we still, uh, what is the thoughts in regards to, we still need a server if it's going to crash before we possibly get someone in place? So I don't know what's your thoughts on that aspect of it?
Continue services until you find replacing them, but.
So could we, like, get the server and have a work on it? Or you're saying you want a new person in place to get the new server?
I would already get a new person in place.
I think a new person in place.
But, uh, but it got to be close. I would start by calling him now, see if he sponsors anything now. Then, after, for competition.
Okay. That's been the issue is that it's dying on its hands now.
I agree.
You have. A quote from, uh, Tally Water Services for Hydro Stop Air Motor. You should have that on.
Modernization?
Yes. You purchased this and, uh, it's a single source. So with it being a single source, you go here and purchase it from, um, modernization.
This is, sorry. What did you say?
Go ahead.
Uh, this is the, um, hydro stop that's needed to finish, um, Missouri Avenue. You heard that? That's for you.
What's that mean? What was that mean?
This is supposed to finish Missouri.
Missouri and as well, as well as five. Okay, put it on the agenda.
Yes.
Also you should have a request, um, attendance disaster leadership conference, um, November the eleventh to the fourteenth. If you would like to go, the board would have to approve this.
Uh, I'm not going to. This is a big effort by all the insurance commissioners to, to do something about this and get everyone on the same page. So it would be something good, but I'm not going to. Y'all want it on the agenda?
Put it on the, no, that'd be a new budget.
There's no money, there's no money kicking.
Prefer a Denver.
Okay. Put it on the agenda, voted up or down. Okay? Um, we also have a notice from revised, invoice from revised. And the new social media person, the Miss Emma Bolt, have asked me to ask the board to go ahead and approve this invoice. And by the way, if y'all have not met, Miss Carrie, Miss Carrie.
Yes.
Would you please introduce yourself to the board? Come on, stand up, Miss Carrie.
Um, I'm Carrie, I'm the social media person.
You heard the accent?
She's wonderful. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, stuff I've seen on Facebook is, is positive uplifting, uh, that's really good stuff.
And that's because of Miss Carrie.
Yeah, so keep, keep that up.
Thank you.
Um, I would, I would ask that at some point we look at getting all the social media pages for all the departments under one person, just for a uniform image. I thought that header you built, I think I commented on it, that header you built was really, really nice.
Thank you.
Uh, I think it's better than, uh, uh, some Justin Lofton social media, to be honest.
Okay, I'm trying to make sure I've covered everything.
One quick thing. Can you say about this? Can I ask about this real quick? What is this exactly? What is this? We're five.
That's our website.
Okay. Why is it through QuickBooks?
I don't.
I think that's the invoice.
Oh, they, they use QuickBooks and we're paying their QuickBooks.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you. They invoice via QuickBooks.
Yeah. Okay. All right, that's all.
I have a question.
First, ahead, select on the.
I would like to fill out the agenda for next week to, uh, transfer all my leftover travel money to the fire department to buy furniture. You just buy furniture?
Maybe one couch.
I'm in my search, motherfucker.
Okay, Mayor, I would like to ask for, that we ask for a pay increase for all public works for the new budget. You know, it's coming up. I'm asking for all of us to get a raise.
Ten percent.
How much you see it?
It is tight, but see, they need a raise. They been working.
Put ten percent.
That's what they said, we can only do three to seven percent on the last scale.
Ten percent across the board, let's do it.
The scale, they said three to seven.
Okay, let's, 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 let's go to our monthly business review.
I'm all for it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
During the month of July, the Macomb Fire Department responded to sixty-six calls for service. This includes three structural fires, two brush fires, twenty-six rescue and medical cop incidents, seven general service calls, two control burns, one smell of smoke, one citizen complaint, and twenty-four fossil burns. We currently have six vacancies. The feel-good story is we will start our one thousand-one class Monday. Um, stumbling back is the pain.
You got a mention?
Um, let me second. I got a question too. Um, I heard control burn. I have about eighteen houses that can have a control burn. What is a control burn in your world?
A control burn is a controlled vegetation fire. You cannot burn a structure without tons of.
Once it gets covered in cutsie.
Ladder. It's an EPA nightmare.
We tried it, look at this. They did it to the, the, you show them anyway.
Select on the cans?
I noticed there was a fire hydrant in the Aston forty-one and fifty-one that's was knocked, knocked over and gone and then at five points. Do you need those?
I need fire hydrants in a lot of places.
Are they scheduled to be replaced? They got, they not run over.
I would imagine they're scheduled to be replaced.
They're just, they're, they're, they're knocked over of what?
They're gone. They're not there anymore.
Oh.
That's, that's right. There's some of the.
Like somebody ran over them and they're no longer there.
How did you do that?
Cap it?
I think they broke away up on top of the valve, right?
I believe that's how they operate.
But they got to still do their tasks.
They should do their tasks. That's why I asked for the one.
Okay. All right.
So do you, do you have a, do you do a study on opal and in-opal fire hydrants in the city?
Yes.
How many work, how many don't work?
We have seven hundred and sixty-eight, I believe, that we have. And the last, the last time we operated plugs, we found twenty deficient hydrants. It'll probably be a little more than that because we're scheduled to do plug, uh, flow our plugs within the next couple of months.
Can we get a copy of that report when it's completed?
Sure. Y'all trained in flowing these plugs really good.
Oh yeah, it's been beating our minds since the day we start.
Slowly open, slowly close, so you don't break anything.
But even with that, he can tell you, as old as our water system is.
It's scary doing that.
It's very scary.
I, I, I want to see you open that plug on C C Brian, the one that's under that tree. I want to see that one, that one.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
So you have a report, that's what I'm asking, sir. I think there's something you need for your budget.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next.
Police for July twenty twenty-five, ticket issued, ninety-eight tickets, ticket paid was thirty-three. Income from ticket misdemeanors and payments, twenty-two thousand, two hundred, ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. Arrests made is a hundred and nine. Uh, felony, felony cases bound over was six. Uh, we had a total of thirty felonies for the month of July, four bow, no murders, uh, twenty-six non-bow. We currently have twenty-eight police officers, twelve dispatchers, nine processors, uh, four investigators. Uh, I don't have a deal to the story. Uh, we have, we had quite a few of, uh, drug arrests. Uh, thank God, we were trying to, uh, crack down on drugs. We're doing a great job. We have shut down probably three, well, fat three actual manufacturing, field manufacturing locations within McCall. So I believe that's the thing. Yes. Uh, so that's a good thing.
Uh, two things, I, I sent you a text on one of them, but, um, yeah, the, the last drug bust post, that was the first time I've seen McCall post anything about a drug bust, probably since I left college. And so I thought that was, I thought that was awesome. The second thing is I saw someone get pulled over on Delaware for the first time since I've been elected, seeing someone get pulled over. Uh, so like, I'm really impressed that you're able to get back to, uh, patrols and not chasing calls, but actively, uh, patrolling and, and stopping things. Uh, kind of on the Delaware note, I have started getting calls about people speeding on Delaware now that it's nice and smooth. So catch twenty-two type of street.
Okay, I want to know how many shift and how many police officers.
So we have four shifts, four twelve-hour shifts. Uh, we have four police officers in each shift right now. Two people up there in train.
But you said a twelve-hour shift.
What'd you think of it?
It's twenty-eight.
I stole, that's include me also. So, uh, we only have, uh, twenty patrol.
Yeah, so that includes detectives, that includes bailiff, that includes leadership.
It seems like we had four, we had four ever since the other police chief. I'm just being honest now. And it should have been increased, not just saying it's four on the shift. I'm just saying with the other police chief, we only had four. And it still seem like we only have four again. And I'm still saying all these new police officers that we just hired or that we've been hiring over the months that's passed. I'm saying it should be more than four on the shift. Okay, that, but all of these, it's been for months now, we've been hiring.
So fire will have the same situation. You know, you hire, but you know, some trickle, trickle out the back door as you're hiring as well. You know, fire, I think has brought like seven to us and three or four didn't even make the academy. So.
But these are people that already said it's been off. I'm, I'm just being honest now. It should go up.
We are also really short in detectives and some people have moved into the detective department off patrol.
Right. We increased our detective bureau, but I understand, but since I've been here in March, it's only been three. We moved up to four. We're trying to get to six. Hope that we'll get to six. Uh, what we've been doing is hiring overtime so we can make that five. And our detectives during the daytime is that extra patrol, uh, but we're trying to saturate the streets so you can be more visible. At this point, we got super plan in place, but I would just ask, just give me a little time.
You said saturate the streets. I haven't seen that in my neighborhood.
And we talked before and, and I, I got well, some report that we do have people, uh, is that over in the Wall Street area?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've been doing, we are doing, definitely doing some work over there.
You and the mayor got fun.
I think you are here with all the good stuff. Yeah, it is. Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Um, whenever we can start getting updates from. Can we do that next month?
If you tell me exactly the things that you want, I will, uh, make sure I can provide those.
I, I will email you the, the list and the, uh, documents that were sent out back, back for the previous year.
And then I'll let you know where I'm at with everything. Yes.
And then Horn, okay, it would be good if he's a consultant.
Well, I thought you guys wanted them to be present to get a ticket, not me.
We, we do, but.
It's okay that.
No, 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 not through you. I'm saying also Horn come down.
Okay.
And give us at least, I think, five monthly, at least every other month. But where, where they're at, we're gonna be spending a free penny on them. Just a little calendar.
I just spoke with, um, I'll be today and they'll be here Thursday, Friday to work with the new control.
Okay, um, announcement, um, a demonstration of a sweeper will be this Thursday, eight twenty-one at three P M on Railroad Boulevard.
At the depot.
Okay.
Thursday?
Thursday, three P M.
Three P M.
At Railroad Boulevard. Okay.
You want to see the sweeper.
Any others? None? All in favor? No, you don't even have to be favorite.